Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
This is gonna be a fun night. We got coffee over there. Tough to come to jump. This is what happened. We will call the December 12th, 2023 regular meeting of the word. If you will stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
The United States of America and the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Approval of the minutes. I have those before you. November 28th regular meeting minutes as well as the November 20th work session minutes. Do I hear a motion to? Do I get a second? That's properly seconded. All those in favor?
Providing and making motion to air the following language into the meeting minute for the regular meeting, November 28th business item number two, to reflect that the information proposal of buying four year police car was provided right at the meeting and council wasn't informed to vote.
Do I get a second? There you go. First page. Going back to the original motion. We have a first, we got a second. All those in favor say aye. Miss A.
Aye.
Miss D.
Aye.
Mr. Qua. Is he still on? Qua, you there?
I can hear you now.
Okay, we're doing the approval of the minutes. Mr. Qua.
Um, I, I have trouble hearing. I just hear, I can hear you now, but I didn't hear what happened before.
Okay, all we're doing is the minutes of the meeting for November 28th. And we are going through the motions. We've got a motion properly seconded. Um, we've got a yes by Miss N, a yes by Miss Dean. Uh, now requesting yours. If we can't hear you, just, just text, uh, Von.
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Miss Chan.
May.
Bless your kids. All right. And then stay with us, Qua, if things kind of bounce in and out. I don't know if we're fully behind or not. Presentations, because these will be fun. Uh, Marl Police Department Lieutenant Richard Thrasher has been selected for the 2023 Jimmy Collins, Chief Jimmy Collins Officer of the Year. You didn't know that, right? That wasn't a surprise.
He did know.
He did not know. Well, that's thanks.
Was it surprised?
All right, I believe that's a surprise, but I actually bet that he's gonna be written up here, so. If I might put something in front of that real quick, turn our minds. Uh, I'd like to invite Lieutenant Tata. He's just returned from the FBI National Academy. It's a great accomplishment what he did, going to the FBI National Academy. There's very few people chosen to go to that academy. He successfully completed. We're very proud of him. Do you have something you'd like to say to people about your experience?
Well, I'm glad to be back home, that's for sure. Two and a half months is a long time, not bad. Some collard greens and cornbread. But I love the work from home, coming back home. And it was a pretty rigorous training with the physicality of my body that I never worked before in my life. And, uh, but 197 people, um, all over the United States and about 12 international officers from mid-level to high command. Um, a great network. And it was lonely at the time then, and it was a short time to develop some relationships. And that's primarily what it was all about. So, but I'm back home, I made it through. Thank you.
To the pressure, you come up with your family? As you know, Lieutenant Thrasher was chosen Officer of the Year. He was chosen by the officers in the departments. Lieutenant Thrasher is, um, I call him my Swiss Army knife. He does everything I ask him. I mean, Lieutenant Thrasher, I need you to do this, he does it. Uh, Lieutenant Thrasher, I need you to do this, he does it. Comes in on his off days. He reworks his schedules to fill in our gaps and everything. Uh, Lieutenant Thrasher is a, a big asset in the department. And, uh, Major Tetra, Major Tetra is going to read his certificate.
City of Marl Police Department Officer of the Year Lieutenant Richard Thrasher. For his outstanding performance above and beyond the call of duty, his service to the community, and his dedication to the city of Marl Police Department, the Chief Jimmy Collins Officer of the Year Award is awarded to Lieutenant Richard Thrasher. Lieutenant Thrasher has demonstrated exceptional professionalism, leadership, and community involvement during calendar year 2023 for his efforts have significantly contributed to the safety and well-being of the community to his service. The Chief Jimmy Collins Officer of the Year Award is a testament to Lieutenant Thrasher's pursuit of justice, adherence to the highest ethical standards, and proactive engagement with community members. His positive impact on crime reduction, innovative approaches to proactive policing, and overall adaptability have fostered positive relationships between law enforcement and the public. Often referred to as the Swiss Army knife for the Marl Police Department, Lieutenant Thrasher is always available in time of need. When asked to cover shift due, shifts due to manpower issues, he always replies with, "Got you, boss." When asked to speak at neighborhood watch meetings, he replies with, "I'm on it, boss." When tasked with traffic enforcement and congested intersections throughout the city, he has produced several hundred movie violations, and the list goes on and on. In gratitude for Lieutenant Richard Thrasher's exceptional contributions in 2023, the Marl Police Department proudly bestows upon him the title of Officer of the Year. This honors a symbol of our appreciation and his dedication, integrity, and selfless service. Signed, Michael Crum.
I'd like, uh, join the men in comments and to present our namesake.
Can Michael make you cry more?
Yeah.
I thought you were bringing that. Thrasher, this is an honor for me to, so my father's award on you, because you did know my mom, so you have a connection there to the Collins family. We're so proud of you for what you've been through this year, for what you've given the city, no matter what you've been through. And we dearly love you. Now it's your turn.
And now can you just stand right here? Don't go anywhere. All right, this is certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Richard Thrasher for being recognized as Officer of the Year of the City of Marl Police Department for outstanding achievement as recognized by the Mayor Council of December 12th, 2023.
Well, now that y'all got me all teary-eyed, um, uh, when I said my 20-year recognition, this has been, um, 20 years of the best years of my life, I meant it. Um, if it wasn't for my wife Angela and my family, I wouldn't have made it this far. Uh, I love all the citizens of Marl, especially Jill Anne. Um, she is, uh, been a major part of my return from a better perspective in life. Uh, her mother was a truly amazing woman, and, uh, if, if it wouldn't have been for the Collins family, I would have been, uh, in much worse shape. I want to thank you all for, uh, being here tonight, and, um, I'll continue to do what I can to be, uh, the light for the city. Thanks.
At some point, we'll, we'll be able to, we'll just give them the floor, they'll let it be pictures and things like that. We got one more. I can read all this one here. So Marl Police Department recognition to receive the chief's award. Ms. Black? You come up with your family? So I'm gonna read the award in a few seconds. I have to say a few words about Ms. Black, and then once your family come back here to be with you.
Thought these were her sister.
I don't know if y'all know, we didn't have a probation service here when I first came on. We did some research on it. We saw that it was something that was gonna get to the community, because people who were on probation were actually doing a community service outside of the city. And we felt that the community service needed to be done in the city. If you committed crimes in the city, you need to give restitution to the city that you committed the crime in. So we talked and everything and decided that we were gonna bring probation in-house. And Ms. Black was recommended to me. Smartest recommendation I've gotten since I've been here. She started from the ground up, and it was a struggle. I mean, you're talking about an agency that she has to meet criteria with and everything, and she hit the ground running and had it up in two months. And has done an outstanding job. So picking the chief's award this year was pretty easy. She's done more for the police department in such a short period of time that it was an easy selection for us. All right, City of Marl Police Department Chief's Award, Probation Supervisor Sharice Black. The City of Marl Police Department proudly acknowledges the outstanding contributions and steadfast dedication of Sharice Black, who has been awarded the 2023 Chief's Award. This award is given to individuals who have demonstrated exceptional commitment, professionalism, and service in the field of law enforcement and probation services. Sharice Black has been an integral part of the City of Marl's probation department since its inception in 2023. Throughout her tenure, she has constantly exhibited a strong sense of duty, compassion, and unwavering commitment to encourage positive change within the community through the probation services. Ms. Black's stellar performance and exemplary work ethic have not gone unnoticed. She has excelled at case management. Sharice has demonstrated an exceptional ability to manage a diverse caseload with precision and empathy. Her meticulous approach to case management has resulted in positive outcomes for numerous individuals under her supervision. The City of Marl Police Department expresses its deepest gratitude for her dedication, compassion, and tireless efforts to create a safer and more resilient community. Certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Sharice Black for being awarded the Chief's Award of the City of Marl Police Department for outstanding achievement as recognized by the Mayor Council of December 12th, 2023.
I want to thank the City of Marl Police Department for entrusting me with, um, the probation. Been doing probation for about 19 years. It's not easy, but it's a task that I'm willing to take on. Every probation is not a bad person. We all have made bad decisions. Some have just not been caught. But again, I would like to thank City of Marl, and I'm here forever to stay.
So for this year, we had the 2023 Best Christmas Decorations. Um, it was a hard choice. It was many houses that participated that, you know, put up the decorations this time of year, but we narrowed it to three place winners. And you see the pictures? The first place winner is 1772 Lake Harmon Road, and that is the first picture to your left. The second place winner is 1822 Mirror Drive. That is the one on the far right. And the third place winner is 1794 Mirror Drive, and it's the center one. I don't see if anybody hears from those addresses to come up.
And what happens when you don't show up is we wait a month and we bring you back, which is why we have a Halloween one that is, that did a good job. But we're not gonna show you what the house looked like.
So on the October 2, uh, I'm sorry, on November 28th council meeting, we did have a, also Halloween contest for the best decorated house, and we have our first place winners here to be properly recognized. Uh, they were not here in the last council meeting, so we're getting recognized. So if you could please come up?
Scary sounds, first place. You'll have to tell us how scary it was, because the city clerk doesn't have a picture, but we appreciate you very much.
Thank you so much.
It's always, um, you know, important from a city standpoint to have community engagement, uh, whether it's young people, people participating in the community spirit, community pride, um, and especially when it comes down to Halloween, which we always have a lot of fun here, and as well as Christmas. Um, so.
Well, I did not know you on. It was just a surprise. I was in the shower to win. My mom told me. Got knocked on the door. But, um, like I said, we weren't really trying, but this year, um, compared to other years, we had eyeballs on the bushes. We put eyeballs on the lights. We had, did we have spiders, spider webs, bones on the grass, graveyards, I don't know, lots of things hanging on the sea, um, on the trees. So next year, we're gonna do better now that, you know, we know.
Hello, everybody. My name is Train, um, from the city co, I'm sorry, I'm, um, event coordinator. Um, thanks for the help of all the volunteers that we have very successful Christmas in the park. Um, I did want to interview with our mayor. So, um, give everybody the certificates and the smoggy bus.
We just read them in any word?
Yeah.
So we'll read what we have, and this is, uh, certificate of appreciation. Certificate is gonna be to, and then we're, she's not recognizing the picture. Okay. Lala Lebey. Alma Floyd. Will Wilson. Jenny Dunn. Neen Dunn. Tiffany Cal. And you can come up if, if I call your name and you're not here or something like that. Jacqueline Perez. There are a lot of volunteers out there, so it was, it was important. Uh, Lynn Wynn. Edith Perez. Well, at least put them in there. So Anna Boe, Wynn. Brittany Wynn. Catherine Shaw. Abraham Delgalia. Nina Wynn. Kathy Wynn. And Jenny.
This, um, next group, they're very special to us. Not only do they volunteer countless hours to city events, but they also are youth, uh, group council for the city of Marl. Uh, so the mayor's gonna, we're gonna recognize them individually, those that volunteer, but the mayor's gonna present one to the entire organization. So, Ms. Parker, can you please come up to receive?
And I believe from the conversation I just had, the Beta Club would have been the first group. We had several groups out there. Um, so obviously, we have walking in authority here in abundance tonight. Uh, the Beta Club, maybe they got school involved. Certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to the Walking in Authority Team Council. Appreciation for unwavering commitment, outstanding contribution, Christmas in the Park on December 2nd, 2023, on behalf of the Mayor Council.
Thank you so much.
We have a gift card for you too, so. And we'll have everyone up for pictures, um, because y'all look a lot better than me.
Andrew Milner. Dear Remy, Nicole. Kari Holston. Edith. Shabaria. Lynn Contra.
And he worked hard.
I think that's the group. You wanted to stand up for appreciation?
We're gonna take this group picture right here, and then we're gonna take a picture with everybody.
All right, we're gonna take a couple of pictures here. Uh, and while we're doing it, we're gonna give them a reason to put a smile on their face. Um, when they were here last, you know, they're, as a youth council, they wanna go to Washington DC and kind of see, you know, the historical stuff that, that's up there. Um, and they need to raise, you know, a certain amount of money to be able to do that, um, a, as a group. And, uh, so they provided a significant amount of labor, man hours during, um, the Christmas event, um, not only for the Santa Claus house, but ultimately, uh, they had a couple of other things that were out there and they were manning the gates. And I don't remember exactly what the number of hours is, uh, but, uh, for their participation, um, we will provide them a check for $1,300. We, we said the same thing when they're out there working.
Okay. So can we take a picture?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we'll just, uh, y'all just keep going. We'll just take a picture.
Y'all better move. Get up. Don't act like you can't move. Get up there. Get up. Oh, excuse me, I'm military, so when I say move, I mean, just like that. Okay? I, I'm sorry. Excuse me, y'all. Uh, hold your ears. How's that? Excuse me for a minute. Get up here. These are my former students. They're in college now. The one that, uh...
Thank you very much.
Oh, we, we have a gift for you all also. Come on. Get the gifts. Get the gifts. We have a video ready. Come on.
On behalf of Walking Authority Team Council, we present all with these gifts. We thank you so much for your contributions, the hope you've allowed us to make for us teams to better our community here at Marl.
I know you're out, don't let me to bend down again. Call him now. I'm sorry.
Mayor John Lavelle.
They're socks, y'all. And then I wanted to, I wanted to extend an esteemed appreciation to, um, the guy that's taking the videos.
Bum.
Just about talking about... Public Works, is Brandon here?
He is not, ma'am.
Okay, well, this is for him.
I'll take that for him.
Okay. And then we have, um, the... And I got a couple of more.
Fire chief over there, he's feeling a little bit hurt.
And who am I missing? The CD.
There's our date. You got your check, so I might want to give him one.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, our date.
Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, there's a couple more. And some, some of the, um, some of the citizens have really stood up, stepped up and helped us out. Wayne Collins, would you step up here, please?
I like socks.
That hurts you. And then, um, come on.
Love.
Yeah, love. Come on. Yeah, no, I can't get it together. That's right. And then we have a couple more, and then I'm going to get out of your way. Um, it's, uh, come on. Okay, it's, it's a couple more, but y'all charge it to my head, not my heart. Okay, um, compliments, not compliments of Walking in Authority Team Council, but these were done by Ms. Vicki Jennings, would you stand up, please? She's a personal shopper. So if I forgot to take the tag off, how much it costs, y'all please take the tag off and don't be giddy.
What's that game they play where you technically...
Thank you all.
Well, we thank you to me, and you can see we had a lot of fun. There's a lot going on in our community. We walk everyone. As they're exiting, please feel free to give a mic. The last thing we've got on our agenda is, outside of pictures, we have a police department conference, is an ordinance, is basically related to GMEBS, which is about the mortgage ability to tie consistent forward to City of Morrow. However, it is our first reading. There is a copy of it that is available on the back counter. If you want to go to sleep reading, you know, financials, that's there for you. And the second reading, where we will not have the December 26 council meetings right after Christmas, so that's canceled. We will have a call reading, a very short call meeting, have the second reading of this particular ordinance on December 19, which will be Tuesday next week. If you're stuck in traffic, you probably won't survive the council meeting, it'll be in and will be out. So if you have a chance to read it, if you have comments on it or anything along those lines, please feel free. General comments, comments from the audience. Here are not comments from the City Hall.
Well, I just want to tell, for those that didn't come to the Christmas in the Park, it was fabulous. It was so much fun, and I would like to thank you too, to, of course, all the city employees, to, um, to here Tran Wynn, to Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department, y'all were just super great, and we had such a wonderful time. Even whoever drove the little truck, you know, the old train. What was his name? Admiral something.
General.
General something. Yeah. It was great. Thank you.
Okay, we all know for the lovely time we've had going up and down Lake Harmon Road as they are burying the electric.
A multi-million dollar Jordan Power investment. Yes.
Okay. Well, now, I don't know if anybody's noticed, all the power lines are going from here down are on this side. Now they're putting poles up on the other side and running wires from them to the house. What are they doing? Do they know?
Maybe they didn't make a bigger investment on your side of the street as they did on everyone else.
I don't even want to apologize for everything.
Well, there's a lot of overhead power lines. There's a lot of overhead power lines. They're not going to be able to get all of it. They're doing some underground stuff. I don't know what the f...
No, what they're doing is they're putting on power poles on the other side of the street and running lines from what's there across the street. Doesn't make any sense that it's worked all this time. Why do they have to put up new poles?
I haven't seen that.
That's a really interesting question.
Notice when you go down a location, it's there.
Well, now we have something.
And I still have a spotlight on my front door.
Yes.
If you were what? What she get?
All right. Point of information, now I know what I'll look for when I'm driving down Lake Harmon. Other comments. Here are not comments from the City Council. Miss Nett.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to you, Thrasher. Congratulations to you. Your heart just shows everything that you do, and we appreciate you. Ms. Black, congratulations. Killer the game. We appreciate you. Thanks to the City Hall staff for doing what you do every day, the level of commitment that you all bring to every event. Words can't express how appreciative we are of you and your dedication to bring the community, the events that we cherish. The Christmas in the Park is one of our signature events, long-standing, so I appreciate everything that you all do. Happy holidays, everybody.
Mr. Qua.
Hi, I'm sorry I missed it tonight, but I'd like to say congratulations to you, Thrasher, and to everybody else in the Police Department. Thank you to the CD for the wonderful Christmas event, and again, thank you for all the volunteer that that makes it awesome to even awesome. I'm sorry I missed it tonight again, but I'll see you all Saturday night. Thank you.
Ms. Tran.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to Lieutenant Thrasher and Ms. Sherri Black on your award, and thank you for all the staff and all the you city staff doing a good job for helping us to provide public safety, public service, and city event to improve quality of life of the people in Morrow. I thank you.
Ms. Deen.
Just wanted to, I think I might need a piece of tissue. Thrasher, you're the greatest, you're the greatest. We appreciate you for everything that you do, and you're my best friend. I can call you for whatever it is that I don't know, and I can be sure that you're going to help me out on that. And to Todd, you're getting back in shape, I guess, I think. Charisse, congratulations. And to our Police Department, hey, I feel safe. I can almost leave my doors open, but I won't. I feel that way. And to our Fire Department, listen, if anything happens, I know you all are there. And to the staff of Morrow, you're the greatest. Appreciate you all. One more thing. The mayor and I, Renee, we go to training.
They skipped the line. We acted like we were taking a video. Somebody actually proved that, so just wanted to go ahead and get that out there real quick, but it was, that was a lot of fun. We enjoyed that. But Merry Christmas to everyone. We're going to take photographs here with the entire Police Department and all the different awards. Congratulations, Thrasher, and congratulations, Emily. And the Halloween house, better late than never, but we're looking forward to it next week and our next year, so that'll be fun. And, you know, when you look at the number of volunteers, these numbers kind of, you know, get lost in the different things. They handed out 1,500 cookies, and that basically would say, as you're coming through in a period of four hours, that's 400 people an hour to walk through and take pictures with Santa Claus and do different things, plus be pretty rich. And the photos are all online, so if you have your family on there, just look through them, you'll find them. That's a lot of people, and they stood in line, enjoyed it. The weather held up. It's like everyone else canceled theirs. Morrow's stuck in there, and we got our gift from Santa Claus right away. We really appreciate everyone coming out. Again, next week's council meeting is going to be really quick, and we don't see you again. It's going to happen this year. And please feel free to meet and talk with the Police Department, take some pictures. Meeting adjourned.